All right, can I call, I'd like to call to order, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee for Tuesday, April 24th, 2018. We're at the Abington Middle High School library and it now is 7 o'clock. Could everyone rise? Salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it's time for our hearing of visitors. Is there anyone who has something that they would like to say this evening? All right. Seeing no one, we'll move on to the reading and approval of records. The minutes of the meeting for March 27th, 2018. Does anyone have any questions, comments, corrections? If not, can I have someone make a motion to approve the minutes for March 27th?
I'll make the motion.
All right, do we have a second?
They weren't here, Kath, it doesn't have to be you.
All right, I guess it'll have to be me, I'll second that. And we have two abstentions. They were absent. All right, all in favor? That takes care of that very quickly. All right, moving on. Principals reports. Laura Montagino from the Abington Early Education Program.
So I've deployed bridge to try and play, and then have our student presentation. I thought it was too late to have students out, so we're going to review the slides play.
Projectors are all set to shut off at 7 o'clock.
It worked.
Yep, it worked.
Thank you, Rich. Do we need lights? You got a friend in me. You got a friend in me. When you're lonely, look ahead and you'll find your eyes, you're nice and warm, baby. You just remember what your old past said, boy, you got a friend in me. Yeah, you got a friend in me. You got a friend in me. You got a friend in me. You got trouble, I got 'em too. Yeah, there's a man in you, what you do, baby. Stick together, see it through, 'cause you got a friend in me. You got a friend in me. Some other folks might be really smart than I am, being strong and true. Maybe it's none of them, well, now the love you're way I knew. It's me and you, boy, and as the years go by, a friendship will never die. You're gonna see it's our destiny. You got a friend in me. You got a friend in me. You got a friend in me. So as you can see, we are thoroughly enjoying the new facilities that you've given us here at the AEP. I want to give a huge shout out to our school council member, Pam Nelli, who put this presentation together for us, and say that we are excited to come before you in the next month or two and share our school improvement plan that what you've given us is fabulous and share with many wonderful days in life of AEP. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Laura, that was a wonderful presentation. I want to go to school there. All right, our next person we're going to be calling on is Teresa Sullivan. In high school.
We're packed agenda tonight. Personally, agenda is superintendent's award to the number one student in senior class at Abington High School. And this is the Massachusetts Association of Schools Superintendent's Award. He'll award tonight to Allison Dennehy, our number one 4.0 GPA, class of 2018, senior student, and will also recognize you again at our awards ceremony, for the senior awards ceremony in May. Allison is basketball team, coaches award, you're in 10, ABC club, math team, peer leader, National Honor Society, National Honor Society president, peer leader, school newspaper editor, Unified Sports, and the Hope &amp; True Brian Award Leadership Award. Congratulations, Allison.
Thank you for taking the picture, I was going to ask if somebody would do that.
Yeah, I got it. And some of the heart.
Thank you.
Let me just grab another one. No distractions.
Congratulations.
More importantly, Allison, you're going to education, right? UVM?
No, probably should turn us. Should I just keep on going?
Go ahead.
Next on the agenda for me is just to acknowledge an award that was already presented, but I thought it would be important to recognize tonight, Abington High School Senior Brian Cashman. Brian, come on up for a second, if you would. And there are several members behind me of the 2017-18 Abington High School hockey team. Jason, come on up behind if you can, as well as Coach Smith and Coach Kingston, I think they're both here as well. The team and Brian particularly are being honored for a best buddy award that was already given to you guys, I know, to recognize and celebrate the recipients who have demonstrated compassion, leadership, and mentoring skills while making the difference in the lives of others. These young men have taken on a disabled student at the high school and made him part of the team on a regular basis, invited him to pasta parties, as well as team manager, helped him with statistics, became a friend, compassionate, move on your parts. I've seen them dancing at the dances as well and giving special attention to kids who might not normally receive that attention. It's been very special to watch some of the sort of lessons and attributes, I think, of humanity outside of our tested curriculum, for sure. So certainly appreciate the role that you guys have played in his life, and his parents expressed that as a life-changing experience. I think that you should know that that's how they felt. And the award here is unbelievable. Somebody had the banner, I saw too. Coach Kingston, did you have the banner?
Yeah.
Can you put that, why don't you put it right in front of the podium?
This?
No. Put that back in here.
Yeah, I want to break that.
Congratulations, and I thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
I mean, I didn't really come here to say stuff, but there's not a lot of you here, but it's all these big names, so kind of a little nervous. I just want to say thank you for the recognition. I couldn't have done it without the kids behind me and my coaches. They played a huge help. I missed a couple practices because I was sick, and I know they helped tie Alex's skates a few days. This was not a solo effort, it was just a whole team thing. Alex is a great kid to have around, he was awesome, he helped with stats, like Principal Sullivan said, and he always was positive, had so much fun, and I think we had fun being around him all the time. So thank you very much, and have a nice night.
Dr. Sullivan, I'd like to interrupt you for a minute. Congratulations to all of you on your accomplishment, and congratulations to you, you mustn't sleep. Wonderful job. And Chris, do you have something?
So this is to all you guys, so this is a little, so my son's special needs as well. So I just want to tell you how much it means to me to see you guys do this. I know it's, and I know it's beyond the hockey team, I know it's the whole school. Dr. Sullivan, Peter Serino back there, I know, like, the Unified Team, it's a culture in the school. I hear about it, I don't have anybody in high school, my oldest is in second grade, so, but I hear about it. I hear about it from a lot of people that I'm close to in the early education program. And you see it here, they see with the things, just the things on the wall, lack of bullying. So from personally, I just want to say thank you to all of you. Brian, definitely thank you, and just keep doing everything you're doing, all you guys. You probably don't even know how much it meant to him.
Thank you. Thank you.
You think that was a tearjerker? Stick with the humanity thing. Ms. Coria has, sorry, I keep moving. Ms. Coria has done a project with her art students, I think this is the second year, and she can explain it to you, but I will say that when she sends it out to us as faculty and she invited other students to watch, it's a very, very moving project, it's authentic. Again, another area that I think goes unrecognized and untested and not in the front page of the Globe, but this is what we're doing, this is what education is for, this is what it's all about. This is an authentic project that our students this year were engaged with young children in Syria. And do you want me to explain, do you want to come up and explain what they did, or does it speak for itself?
Yeah, sure. Camera will fold. So this is a project that was sponsored by the Abington Education Foundation, and it's coordinated by the Memory Project, who works with art teachers all over the country, and works with underprivileged children all around the world, and we create artwork for them. So what this video is, it's Syrian children in refugee camps, and it's them receiving
What you have done for these children is very special. For these children, there are a lot of donations, financial donations that comes for the facilities and everything else, they're very important, but they lack the special touch that you guys have provided in this project. What you have done, you have shown these children that there are people on the other side of the world that really cares, and that will change their future. What I've seen yesterday is that the love that you send for them have lit up their hearts, and I saw that on their faces. So really, thank you for everything that you have done.
These Syrian refugees have suffered a lot. For them to see their photos, their portraits in such a way just puts a smile on their face. Thank you very much.
I think they truly are making a difference, and you don't always see it on the front page of the Globe, as I said earlier, but this very, very important project, second year we're done, and I wanted you to share that with you.
Michelle, I'd like to say thank you to you also for the work that you put into this. It was wonderful.
And so fitting that we ask for you to consider three other global trips this evening. I think, I truly believe it's making a difference for all of our students and what they see. We have several students here who have traveled tonight, and I know, I think that Joe and Kath might want to come up and just give a minute or two of your experience in Costa Rica. I know Allison, did you go to Iceland? So you guys want to come up for just a second before we ask the trips? Share with the committee your experience and how valuable it's been.
So recently this February, we went to Costa Rica, and like, when you first saw the itinerary, you're like, okay, we're doing all these adventurous things, and like, you're like, but it's much more than just like, oh, we went supply and white water rafting. It's, we were interacting with the locals, and we were fully like, emerging ourselves like, within their culture. And I think the most important part was we were taking what we learned inside the classroom outside, because you take so many years of Spanish, and you're like, okay, like, when am I going to get to use it? Like, you don't know if you're ever going to get to a Spanish-speaking country, but by taking us to Costa Rica, we were able to, like, from the second we got off the plane, to just use our knowledge that we had from the classroom with like, the locals, and like, you could tell how much they appreciated that you were trying, and like, as someone who also went to like, Italy the year before. So it's like, you hear about all these places in like textbooks, and you're like, learning about it in history, but then you actually put yourself in their environment, and it like, just comes to life for you.
Absolutely, I think Kath really hit the nail on the head there. You can read textbooks and you can talk about these places in the classroom all you want, but to actually like, go to these places and learn their culture, and speak their language is just an incredible experience. I was very fortunate and blessed to have gone on this trip. One of the days we were there, we actually got the privilege to go into a school and to sort of see what their education is like. All the children were so like, happy to see us and to actually like, sort of learn a little bit about us while we were learning about them, and sort of, that was a very eye-opening experience also, because to see how much we take for granted here in the United States, and sort of see what less they have. And a few of us students actually got to donate money to that school to help them sort of fund their education and for their lunches. It was an incredible experience, and I'm very thankful to have gone on that.
I think, before I ask you to, you know, to consider each of those trips, the students and all the staff that are, you know, asking to go on the next trips here tonight to answer any questions that you might have about their particular trips, they have put in all the paperwork and hope, but, you know, we've worked through in subcommittee the agreed-upon selection process as well, so they are all here if you have any questions for them tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. All right, the first trip I see listed here is consideration of an international field trip to the Dominican Republic in February. Does anyone have any questions on this? Do you want to come up and explain your trip?
Yeah.
We'll be very brief here. I'm Matt Pippel, eighth grade history teacher over at, almost Aprilia, Abington Middle School. Our goal for our trip here is we're planning on going to the Dominican Republic, and it's in fact, it's called the Culture and Service in the Dominican Republic Trip, so it's not just a kind of a tourist trip we're actually going to be doing, it's kind of outlined here. A trip that's going to be promoting ecotourism, to help support local economic and conservation efforts, it's going to be helping improve education in schools for youth, planting vegetable gardens to provide food sources for nearby community. So the big thing that we really want everyone to take away from this trip is that, kind of exactly what you guys were saying a couple minutes ago, is even as a, you know, a history social studies teacher, you can only do so much in a textbook. When I've had students in the past that have those diverse backgrounds, that have actually lived in other countries, that have gone other places, being able to come in with that hands-on experience is just so much more than any note card or PowerPoint can do at all. So one of the cool things that this trip really is going to do is during the day, it's really all itemized, every single day is like perfectly organized by the trip leaders, and every night, they have a daily group reflection. So what this allows students to do is to have kind of a interaction with the locals, they're able to talk about with children, all sorts of different backgrounds, topics such as global issues, poverty, social justice, and gender equality. So just the idea of having those kids be able to do that, come back to Abington, share that with their peers, I think that would be just a really awesome process that, you know, a classroom in this building just won't be able to reach enough of. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Peck, who's going to just share a quick personal insight about, she was kind of the mastermind.
I was the mastermind. I truly believe that a service trip was really important. My two kids had done it in the past. My daughter went to Guatemala last year, and she just came back a different kid. Just, you know, kind of like what Kath said, you take everything for granted, and they do, and then they see these areas where it's such poverty, they don't really have any. And I just think it's important for them to learn to give back. They need to give back to their community that worked so hard to build them a great school, and I think it's a way to teach them to do that. That was it, sweetie. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
So we've included on that handout, it has like, so it's an eight-day trip rather than us walking through every.
Yeah, I just want.
It's all handed there. I guess the price of the trip we have on the back, it's $3,444, nine monthly.
Okay. Next, we're moving on to reports of subcommittees, the Policy Review and Update Subcommittee, which is Wendy and myself. We met to review the two policies that you have in front of you. The first one being the computer use policy. We have a computer use policy. This is an addition to it to cover the one-to-one laptops that we should have next year.
Right.
Next year. So it spells out all the information about the laptops that the students will be using, how they'll be distributed, costs, repairs, sign-off, cleanup. It's a pretty detailed policy, but it is being added to the current policy we have for computer use.
And handbooks?
And handbooks, yes.
And so if the committee wants to wait, you know, here, the presentation and ask some questions and then wait until next month, that's fine. I want to thank Kathy and Wendy for reviewing it. I want to thank, most of all, Rich Baikowski and other people that he's collaborated with for this. Do you want to ask Rich to?
Rich, would you like to tell us about the addition to the policy?
I figured I'd start just with a little bit of background about the whole point of the policy. The district, in conjunction with the building of this building, money was set aside to allow us to pursue a one-to-one computer initiative for the district. That money that was set aside is going to allow us to purchase computers for our students who, next year, will be in seventh through 12th grade. That's about 937 kids right now. That purchase has already happened, so those computers are already purchased. We've also purchased bags for the computers right now, so the process has already started. It's already moving. Relative to this whole process, we created a one-to-one committee in the district of 20 staff members. That committee has helped to sort of drive ideas around how the computers will be used in the classrooms, some of the expectations for the classroom. They've been piloting learning management systems, which we feel like is an important addition to the district. A learning management system basically allows you to run your entire class online. So now that the students will have computers and will have access, basically, at all times with Internet access, then, you know, you can flip your classroom, you can have all of your work online, you can, you know, the kids can submit all of their work. So all of these things kind of live in that learning management shell, so that's another addition that kind of goes along with the one-to-one computers. And, you know, an added benefit with all of these students in these upper grades getting computers, the laptop carts and labs right now that exist at the middle and high school kind of push down to the lower grades. So those grades will also benefit from this because they'll have additional computers. So that's just kind of an overview of the whole one-to-one and why this document even I don't, I don't want to read the whole document either, so I did come up with a couple of points. As Peter had said, the intent of this document is to be in addition to the acceptable use policy. It doesn't in any way replace the acceptable use policy, but it's targeted at those seventh through 12th grades to kind of lay out the expectations for those students now that they're receiving this device. You know, this has never happened before for these students, so we thought, in following some of the ideas that other districts have done, it would be important to kind of lay some groundwork and some rules specific to those grades. So just going quickly through some of this document. At the beginning, there's some information about receiving the laptop. We haven't really worked the logistics out of that yet, giving out 1,000 computers at the beginning of the school year, but basically, it'll happen in advisory or in homeroom. But that won't happen until the students and parents have signed off on the handbook. And now that this document will be in the handbook, it will be covered as a district, knowing that they've read the document and that they understand the things that we're laying out. And the second section, the next section, excuse me, taking care of the laptop. Basically, you know, don't eat or drink near the laptop, don't leave the laptop in your car overnight with extreme temperatures during the winter, things like that. Don't read that there, screen care, things like that. And then go into using the laptop at school. So one of the expectations we wanted to set was that the laptops would come to school charged. It would be important that the laptop works for the entire school day. There will be charging stations available in common areas like this one and in the cafeterias. But the reality is, if no students charge their laptop at night and they came into school, then there wouldn't be enough spots to charge them. So we wanted to set that expectation right up front. We will be setting up, our intent is to set up a check-in, checkout area here in the library. Things will happen, whether there's damage to a laptop by an accident or a laptop is left at home. So the opportunity needs to be there for those students to have a device in the event that they leave it at their home, for example. So this area would be a place where you would just kind of check it in and out for the day, similar to checking out a book. If there was a repair needed, they would check one out and then that device would come to the technology center for repair. But if it was a one-off type of daily thing, A, it can be tracked, so if the same student is forgetting their device every single day, we'll have track of that because they're coming here and getting one. But then it'll, they won't be without, so you don't go a day without the device and fall behind, like similar to if you left your textbook or something at home, you won't have to have that experience. The next section is using the laptop outside of school, so, you know, this is obviously a culture shift for students and for us. Because we are a public school, we are required to filter our Internet while you're in school. But because we are providing this device, we're also required to filter your Internet and log your Internet while you're at home. So that is, we want to let them know of that expectation in advance, so that it's not a surprise. But if students are trying to do things at home or go to websites that are inappropriate at home, they'll be blocked and we'll also have a log of that activity. So we don't, we don't want to keep that a secret. That's just part of the rule, so that's laid out in the document. There's a general requirements section that basically says, you know, you shouldn't try and circumvent any of the security that we have, you can't install your own software, you know, the device is for educational purposes. And, you know, if there's a loss or a damaged device, then it should be brought back here to the library media center as soon as possible, so that we can get it repaired and get another one into their hands, so that they don't miss any class time. The next section is appropriate uses and digital citizenship that basically just kind of reiterates some of the, you're filtered at school, you're filtered at home, you're still, even though this is a different document, you're still required to follow the acceptable use policy, none of that changes. And then returning the laptops is another thing we haven't totally worked out the logistics of, but the intent right now is for a student to have the same laptop through the life of the laptop, so however many years that ends up being, that student will return it in at the end of the year. And then, in the high school in particular, the students have the same homeroom through all four years, so when they get back to homeroom year two, they'll receive the same device back. So that's kind of the gist of that document, and I figured now was a good time to find out if you have any questions about it.
I have a question on the use, Rich. It's more, like, I don't know, my laptop today died after like three hours of not being charged, so is that could, I know there are limited spaces for people to charge them, but there's, like you said, 1,000 kids.
Right.
Is it, are these, like, do they last six hours?
So, on day one, yes. Day one, they'll be rated to somewhere between eight to 10 years. The reality is, over the course of their life, that will decrease. We've talked about having sets of power strips in classrooms, which we've already got a supply of those, so we'll give the opportunities as much as we can. I would say that for the first year or two, I don't, I don't have a huge concern about that, but as the devices age, that will be more and more of an issue that we're going to have to look into for sure, especially when you get to the last few periods of the day.
You should take one of these laptops. Battery's longer.
That's right. So, I almost forgot. So this is actually the device right here that we've selected and purchased. I figured we could just take a quick look at it. It's, it's built to be durable, so it's, it's, you know, not the lightest laptop in the world. It's also not the biggest laptop in the world, but we've had great success using this model in the school already, and it is specifically built to be used in education and to be durable, so that's, that's why we went with that one. I did mention that we are also purchasing bags for the devices. They're thin bags. They have handles and a shoulder strap, and the intent for the bag is that you can actually fold the straps in and it'll fit into a backpack. So it's, it's not a replacement for a backpack, but it's protection and also you can kind of slide it into your backpack if that's what you want to do.
Do they come with laptop chargers?
Yes.
Because I know that that would be an option, I'm assuming that would just plug into one of the regular plugs in the room.
Yeah, so everyone, every student will get a bag, a laptop, a charger.
Couple of questions.
Yep.
First question is that the note, no time will any member of the Amington Public School staff have the ability to manipulate the laptop webcam in any way.
Yep.
Or will they be operable or they're not?
Yes, they're operable, but there's, we don't have any software or any functionality to go in and view the laptop, the webcam, either now or in the future.
So you won't be able to log on to someone's computer and look through their camera?
Correct.
So the students will be able to use it?
Yes, but they could use it for classwork, which I think is, you know, depending on the teacher and depending on the subject, is a positive thing. It's not, it's not worth disabling altogether, in my opinion.
Okay. A couple of housekeeping questions. It is heavy. I feel like the kids are dragging around heavy bags as is. I mean, has, do we, I mean, there's no way around it, but I mean, that is a reality in today's world.
Right, so I will say that this particular school year, we purchased two different models of laptops, a lighter one and then this one. The lighter one didn't last more than a couple of months, and that was in a lab setting where it wasn't going home. It was, it was just, you know, from class to class to class. And the reality is, the lighter it gets, the less, the less durable it is, just the keys are more flimsy. These are more difficult to kind of pry off, and, you know, some kids are going to test the durability, and so they did with those lighter ones. So unfortunately, at the price point and for the durability, this is kind of what fits for us.
But it's obviously worth mentioning, the bags should be lighter because they'll be carrying less, less paper.
Yes. I mean, I, ultimately, you won't need your textbooks as much as we sort of migrate towards online textbooks and integrating everything into the learning management system. We're not, we're not totally there yet, but as we move through the future, there will be less heavy bags that you'll have to carry.
Is the bag you provide, or we provide, mandatory, or can they just toss it in their backpack? Like, is it going to be a big deal if they don't have the?
The document does currently say that we want them to transport it in that bag.
I know we want them to. I mean, I'm just thinking, that's, that really is like, I feel unrealistic, first of all, trying to find everything in the morning is, you know, daunting some days anyways, but to have to remember another, you know, a bag to put in a bag.
Sure.
Is there going to be any, I guess, have we, we probably haven't even thought it through, like, what's really the ramification? If it still comes to school and it's good, but it's not in the little bag Amington High provided, I guess.
I, I have no idea.
As the IT director, I'm not, I don't, I don't do much.
No, I'm just, that's what I said, we probably haven't talked it.
I can't universally say that that's not going to be a big deal, but I can't imagine that that's going to be that a big deal.
Yeah, I mean, the bag.
Ninety-nine percent of the time, that's not a big deal. For the 1% of the time that it causes damage and it hurts the computer, I think that would be a different story.
Yeah, I mean, I think the bag will offer a level of protection, but it's not bulletproof. So the requirement of having the bag is, is more, I don't want, I don't want the kids walking around like this, you know?
No, I see them putting it in there.
Or, you know, I'd rather have it in the bag. So, I mean, if it, I think if there's a specific student that is, that's constantly carrying it around in a way that's inappropriate, then that would be something that would be brought up. But I don't think it's, I don't think we're going to have a bag checked every day or anything.
Excellent. That's where I was going.
Yeah.
Do we have any other questions? Yes, go ahead.
I just had two questions, that's probably more for you guys, and at the high school, just wondering if teachers will be trained on something like land school, so they can lock down the computers to prevent the kids from going to sites that they're not working on? If that's something that will happen pretty quickly early on in the year?
So we, I'll answer that one. We do have access to land school. We have rolled it out this year in some of the labs, and it is being used. So that will be a focus towards the beginning of the year. We do have other technology training that we're doing, but it's pretty easy to use once it's set up, so that was definitely something that we pursued and that we had access to when we high planned on using.
Okay, and then the second question is, with the use of technology comes greater issues with cheating and plagiarism, so I was just wondering if at some point the school's policy on that will be looked at and updated to accommodate the issues with students and the greater ability to do that.
I think all those policies have to evolve, like all policies. We, obviously, we don't allow plagiarism, obviously. So as that has to change with the technology changing, that, that has to happen everywhere.
Just as we revisited this policy, because we have something new coming into it to add what we needed to have, all of the policies within the schools get revisited when new mandates arrive, when new challenges arrive, so that they are updated. It's got to be a living, growing document.
Rich, while you're up there, why don't you talk to everyone about the partnership with Microsoft?
Okay, so in our district, we use Office 365 for our email, and the kids all have accounts, they log in, they can use the Office products. They have OneDrive online storage, which is like Dropbox, most people are familiar with Dropbox. So because we use Microsoft, we've been able to partner with them over the last few years to help deliver training for our staff. Over the past few years, we've had someone come in and they've trained teachers in our district who then are able to train other teachers on our professional development days. Well, we've kind of morphed that now with a new agreement with Microsoft, and Microsoft is providing us $11,000 worth of training from an outside vendor called Edge Escape. And that vendor will come in on a PD day and then outside of PD days to really do some classroom coaching, get into classrooms, and help teachers really start to integrate the Microsoft products into our learning management system and into the day-to-day teaching and learning that they're doing. So, you know, we've, in the past, sort of taught the teachers, these are all the tools that you have, and this is how you use those tools, and then this is the next step of actually taking those tools and really using them in the classroom. So we're excited because this is different, and it's with an outside person, so we don't have to rely on our staff pulling our staff out of classrooms. We'll have somebody coming in, you can go into those rooms and really make an impact in those classrooms.
So just, I'm glad you outlined that, Rich, it was a good suggestion. The year before, they gave us $30,000 towards professional development implementation, because this has been something that is going to take a lot more, there's a lot more work to be done with this, but it's something that we have been working on for the last couple of years, knowing this day was coming.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So, I hope this makes sense. With Microsoft having access to the laptops, like, they would have access to the laptops, the kid's information as far as, I don't know, like, whatever you guys put in, like, when, say your laptop was lost, would it just be the number, or would all of the kid's information be in there? Like, is, you know, their name, their address?
So, Microsoft doesn't have access to the name and address information?
Okay.
Or their, or their student ID information or other stuff. They have, each kid has a Microsoft account, so they have a username and a password, and so they would have their username and password and their name information, but we don't supply Microsoft with their address. Every kid's address is their school.
Okay.
For us, it's not their home address. That information is stored in Aspen, our SIS, which doesn't communicate with the Microsoft stuff, so the information that's on the laptop would not have any of that demographic information. It just basically has their username, password, and their first name and last name.
So would they have access to any tests or schoolwork or anything, like, if they wanted to pull any kind of information?
So, the learning management system that we select would have test information in there. Microsoft wouldn't. You could pull Microsoft content into your learning management system, but you can't, they can't pull it back out. So that company that we decide, whichever learning management system we pick, would have that information, similar to Aspen right now having that information, you know, that there is a level that you, you know, you sign agreements with these companies that say, if we stop working with you, if we request of you, you have to destroy all our information. So that, it's unfortunately a reality of life. You do have to trust these companies, but we will have agreements in place that will help protect us, you know, from data being lost.
They can't go and sell that data off of our information system to Facebook?
There's actually a, there's a consortium of Massachusetts districts that's been led by Cambridge and Boston, and we, we are part of that group. And the reality is, Cambridge and Boston have all this money, so they have lawyers, and so they have created all these agreements with all these companies that say, you can't sell our information, you can't steal our information. And so, because they're bigger, and the reality is, they have more resources, they've, but they've allowed everyone else to kind of join in, so that, we're part of that, so we have some of that protection with some of those agreements that they've worked through with lawyers, and so we don't have to basically recreate the wheel.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else have a question? I thank you for your explanations tonight, Rich, and thank you for meeting with us earlier.
Problem.
At this point, we have to make a decision whether you need another month to take a look at this agreement, at this policy, or whether you'd be ready to make a motion tonight to approve the addition to the computer use policy as presented.
I'd rather do it tonight because I remember what Rich just told me more than in a month ago.
All right, fine with it tonight. Okay, then I'll be looking for a motion to approve the grade seven through 12 one-to-one computer use policy as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's unanimous. All right, next policy that we're looking at is a fee structure for field use. There's just a minor change to what we had looked at in the policy approximately a year ago.
It's on the second page, it's on the third page of the policy document. It's item 22 in the list.
All right, the superintendent or designee, that needs, there's a typo in here. May adjust fees in unique situations for Group Four at their discretion. This would include situations where last-minute bookings allow unused time to be used to generate revenue and/or a community organization is booking a significant amount of time over a short period. Would you like to explain that?
Do a little bit of a background. So, let me start with our overall philosophy with the use of the field and situations. So for our public school students, they have first and full access to all of the resources that the facilities provide. We book those first. Then, secondly, for what I'm going to call cost neutral, there are park and recreation programs that don't, that just basically cover not even, sometimes the operational costs because they are, they are other town departments, youth programs for kids. Then there are youth groups in town that we want to make sure we are cost neutral with that, so we have to, the lights on the field need to be paid for, upkeep of the field needs to be paid for, the cleanup, the heat, other materials, paper towels, toilet paper, things like that. So we don't, we charge them a bare minimum for usage. Then you get into more expensive groups that can help us, and we put, we put these monies away for more expensive repairs. Someday down the road, for example, the turf field between 10 and 15 years is going to need to be replaced. So these monies from these more expensive groups, as you get to Group Four, you're talking about the private organizations. So these private organizations, the club soccer teams that are charging people a lot of money to participate in their programs, will pay a premium for the field. Well, sort of like hotels.com, let's say we have a room one night and no one's using it, and they're willing to pay that higher value for that room, this, but we need to make that transaction more quickly, and they're willing to write a check at, at that moment, so let's say they're going to use the field, and it's going to, they're going to, we're going to charge them $3,200 for field use for over two weekends, and the field's available. The athletic director would be able to, if they write him a check, we'd be able to charge them $3,000 or $2,900. And therefore, we are, we are, we are using this money for our benefit, for taxpayer benefit, to maintain the field, to replace the field someday down the road, but we're able to make these decisions, hotels.com is the best example I have, more quickly to, so that the transaction goes through. And that's how this would, that's how this would be used.
Does anyone have any questions concerning that?
I just have one quick question for my own purpose. On the addition we just put in, the superintendent or designee, who, who would be the designee?
Athletic director, assistant superintendent, high school principal.
And it only applies to that top group that?
Right, right.
SYS.
Yeah.
Case in both.
Is the policy, did you want that second sentence, or should the policy just be the first sentence of that 22?
Like, that's an explanation of why?
Yeah.
Yes, I know, I thought the same thing. This is what she's saying, is the explanation of why we're putting this in, but do we need to explain why we're putting a policy in, I guess?
I think it describes the situation in which this policy could be used.
Yeah, that, that's kind of why, that's why I had it in there originally, because I wanted, I wanted people, because people see that and they're going to want to, it provides some guidance for 22, is why that's there, if that makes sense.
It creates a very specific situation rather than leaving it more open.
I take this latitude with respect, and I just wanted to sort of capture the essence.
Any other questions?
So now that we're keeping that in, what would, what do we consider last minute?
Couple of weeks out, and we know that the youth groups have already blocked off, we, so they know they've already talked to the youth soccer, they've already know they talked to the youth lacrosse, and so there's available time in the, in the next coming weeks, so they would sell off that time.
Okay, so there is some thought to it. It's really not the last minute. It's not like it's Saturday and someone else's can't get the field.
I was exaggerating a little bit when I'm saying hotels.com, like the night.
I don't want to that. I'm just, when I think of last minute, I think, so these club suckers, maybe there's some damage or some, to theirs, and they can't have a big tournament at their field.
Right.
Ours just happens to be open. Could it be that last minute, or is really?
It could be.
Okay.
Or what happens is, these big tournaments come in and they're using three fields in Weymouth, you know, including the, the airbase, and they've got more teams coming in from out of state than they originally anticipated, so that, as they're booking this, they've got to set up additional locations on the soft shore.
I think the emphasis for the last minute here was to know that all of the user groups within the school, community, school and town community have been accommodated first. Do we have any other questions? Okay, then I'd be looking for a motion to amend the use of facilities policy fee structure for field use as presented.
I'll make the motion.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. All right, Business and Finance Subcommittee, Chris or Peter?
So I want to give Chris an opportunity, and I want to thank Chris, I want to thank Mike for the participation in this, and if there's anything, Chris, you want to provide to it, or do you want to just go into the numbers?
Yeah, you can just get into it.
Okay. So what you have here is, you have an update to the increase by major category page from our previous meeting. So the salary account is not reflective of any changes as we head towards town meeting and are looking for a consensus budget that includes full-day kindergarten. kindergarten. We're not, we're not done at the budget table. So in terms of programs with other districts, that number, that $8,752 was previously $91,958. That's been reduced. The circuit breaker estimate is a little bit more aggressive. It's now $45,413. That was, that was reduced from $159,863, which reduces that entire program's, well, the district portion of our budget by just over a quarter of a million, I'm sorry, that was a quarter of a million dollars, and it was reduced by just under $200,000. The other school services, transportation is the same, special education transportation is the same, electricity, natural gas and materials has been reduced by $25,000. So the solar field above us right now should be going live.
In the next two weeks.
In the next two weeks. It's sort of like Frankenstein's lever when they get the monster going. There's a big lever they're going to switch. And this building will be powered by the sun on days that are about 70% sun, 30% clouds. We're going to save, conservative estimates, $40,000 a year with that. We also have a power, we will probably save more. We also have a power purchasing agreement that the town has implemented with the school department, that we negotiated. And we, we're aware that we have one-time savings for next year's operational budget in a rebate that we're going to get for all of the green work that we did around the construction of this school building in order to get the lead certification that we received. And so that gives us some, some breathing room there. But, but because it's one-time money, it's not something that I would want to reduce the operational line item for that in coming years. But for next year, we can reduce it by $25,000. Gives us that breathing room. So the budget that you have here provides a $22,599,001 and $159,000 operational budget for the schools. That is a 3.11% increase. We're very close to the goal of 3%, which is a goal that would create a consensus for us between the finance committee and the town hall leadership in terms of the current economic forecast for Abington. So we've had a meeting with the town finance committee. I should, I should thank everyone who came and supported that, all of our parents and people who helped, because it was, it was meaningful, and what was communicated in terms of the importance of the need for all-day kindergarten in Abington, which is the next section. It helped us quite a bit. Because the town of Abington is in a situation with free cash, that they believe that they can fund one-time full all-day kindergarten, we are, continue to be optimistic that this is something that will be a part of our budget for this coming year. And then in the years that follow, the reimbursement from the state will pay the majority of this going forward for the Abington Public Schools. So that all-day kindergarten, those figures that you see there that we've talked about over, over the previous months have remained steady. And those are, those are added to the 22.5 million for a total FY19 budget of $23,46,684. We've had subsequent meetings with the financial officers group at the town hall, just as recently as, it's been yesterday, it's been, it's been that busy.
Sounds like it was a long time ago.
And we continue to track with that group for a consensus budget of 3% with the addition of all-day kindergarten and what's represented on the sheet. So we have a little bit further to go, but we're getting very, very close, and we're optimistic. Again, I want to thank Chris for his involvement and his advocacy as we communicate our needs with the community and the strong showing of support we had from the community at the finance committee.
Alright, does anyone else have any questions?
I have a question, Peter. The goal is 3%. Would we actually be, this one-time, assuming of the expense, we will still budget that, and then it will be given to us basically in free cash?
No. Well, for this one-time, yes.
That's what I mean. So that would get us to our estimation of 3%, as opposed to?
That was, that's above the 3%. One-time. So we have the 3%.
Right.
Then the one-time money from free cash would cover this portion here.
Correct.
And then in the following year, chapter 70 money would take care of the kindergarten portion in coming years in terms of the operational budget.
But, can I try, so regardless of where the money is coming from, after town meeting, if it gets approved at a town meeting, the school department budget will be $23,046,684?
Which is a 5%.
5.2%.
Okay, that's what I was trying to clarify, because I couldn't figure out how we were getting to the goal of 3. Thank you.
Right.
It's, we need a goal of 3 before, before we add kindergarten.
And that kindergarten is paid for by the one-time free cash, and then in subsequent years by chapter 70 money, reimbursement.
So we'll make a full budget offering, including the kindergarten?
Correct. There was, it was important because kindergarten's a new addition to, I think, we did, we, as a, as a subcommittee, we talked about portioning this out as a separate piece for the purpose of being clear and specific and transparent and communicating the need to people.
And then for subsequent years, that would be our budget.
Right.
And it would include all-day kindergarten.
Right.
There wouldn't be any alternatives, funding sources.
Right.
That's our budget. Now we need a percentage on top of that. Because chapter 70 comes into the town as part of the, as part of the revenue into the town.
As a reimbursement in the next year for the work we've done this year.
Does anyone else have any questions? Alright, and report of the superintendent of schools. We'll keep you going.
Okay, so, first thing I have for you is an update on what the heck happened with the Cory process and the construction job. So let me, let me back up to the requirement for, for, because the media did a piece on this, and we sent a letter home, and I'll explain to you what happened. So in Massachusetts, there is no requirement to do a Cory check on people performing construction work in your schools. However, schools that are building schools do, most do. We did. We had a process in place for Cory-ing everyone on the job site. The process is subcontractor gives the Cory forms to the general contractor, the general contractor gives the forms to the owner's project manager and the Abington Public Schools, and then we review those Cory reports. And we reviewed over 1,400. 1,400 Cory reports were reviewed. There was one individual who did not have one that was submitted. Once those Cory reports, and here's where the problem came in, once those Cory reports are reviewed, the names are given back to the general contractor, and the person is given a badge specific to the site to be on the site. Those badges are checked, there are gate checks, random gate checks, and then there are daily checks. And I was at a gate check, I know they were taking place, we checked people for badges. The, it's the responsibility of the general contractor, the owner's project manager, and the owner, that's us, to make sure that people have those badges. The individual that was here that did not turn in a Cory report, and this is the problem, had a badge. And that's where the problem lies. I will, I will also tell you, if they had had the Cory check done, they likely would have passed, because the crime that they admitted to, to get them the Level 2 sex offender status, they admitted to after the Cory, or after the Cory would have been checked. However, that's how they got on the site. And it was the fact that they, it was the fact that they had a badge and they shouldn't have. We've communicated with the general contractor and the subcontractor, the likely names of people that he could have gotten that badge from, they, it's their responsibility to investigate that. As far as we're concerned, they will never be back here. So that's their responsibility in terms of their organizations. Our responsibility is to make sure that individual never comes back, and he won't. So going forward with what we currently have on-site, we have a smaller number of people. At any given time over the last two years, we had well over 100 people on the site performing work. We are down to a smaller group of people that are continually monitored and checked. And now, it's because you're down to, you don't have over 100 people here, you're down to a handful. They're, they're easily recognizable, they do have their, they have been Coryed, they do have their badges. A lesson learned from this for me is, the next time I build a school, and I, and I loved this process, but I hope I never have to build another school, in the, in the, in the contract documents that go out to bid for the general contractor, I, we will require that a picture ID be required as a part of that badging process. That, that would have caught this person, because this person was asked for badges. That's how I know that they had a badge, that's how I know that they got a badge from somebody else, that's how I know they got on site, because the process we had in place was followed, and he found a way around it. So I want to, I want to answer any questions that people have on this, or just have provided you that update, because the way the news, the news took a spin away from this, and the news started talking about, if you watch the television, they started talking about how districts in Massachusetts don't require Cory checks, but, but we did. So that, that wouldn't have solved the problem.
But the law, you're not going to say the law?
Well, the law doesn't require that you do.
Right.
But we did. Didn't matter. This person found a way around it because they had a fake badge or a stolen badge.
I have one. How'd you find out about, like, how did it come to your desk, or whatever you want to call it?
I got a phone call, and someone said, did you see the news that person, from another, this person was on a job site in another district? I believe he was on a couple of job sites in a couple of other districts, to be quite honest with you. And I got a call from someone that recognized him from the news, and said, that person was with us, wasn't he? And long behold, he was. So that's when, that's when this letter that you have in your packet was generated.
Anyone else have any questions? Alright, next.
Establishment for the final day of the 17-18 school year is Wednesday, June 20th, 2018. We've had six snow days.
We're luckier than most.
I don't, you don't want me to spend any more time talking about that?
No, make a motion.
Motion to set Wednesday, June 20th, 2018, as the final day of school for students for the 2017-2018 school year. Janette has made the motion. Do we have a second?
I said, well.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, that's unanimous. It's not going to snow again. Alright.
So, thank you.
Did you have to say that?
I say it every day.
The community support action goal in the Institute of Fine, you have a copy of this in your, in your packet. What I've done is I've crossed out those things we're no longer doing. I put in bold, italics, those things that are updated. Let me, let me just say, it's, it's not listed here, it is listed here, but not specifically. The kindergarten initiative is an example of, of this type of work, though. So Twitter and Facebook accounts are active, the website is being updated and proof of better access to visually impaired. Messages and languages other than English are more broadly used. Online signup features are being used where possible for some of our parent conferences. So I'm not going to read everything to you, but I just want to highlight a couple of things to you. For example, it's been, you know, post Parkland, there've been a number of forums. There's another one coming up, Moms Demand Action and Be Smart. That's about, that's about gun safety. That's about people currently owning guns, following the laws and making sure they're locked up so, so our students don't, or people don't have access to them. We're participating in those. Thursday night, I'm doing a forum on the sale of marijuana in Abington. There's a forum that we're participating in. So those things are going on. The Founder's Day Celebration, the Credit for Life, that's another thing that's going on. I think that's tomorrow, the Credit for Life Fair. The assistant district attorney came and talked about internet safety. Obviously something that, that is, and she did a great job with our students watching it. We've got, we're cooperating with the Abington Police Department to provide district-wide Alice training before the close of the school year. Just a couple of the things. So, will you answer any questions people have, or we'll just provide you this update?
Anyone have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to acknowledge some, because I had brought it up in prior meetings, just that like, to your point, Facebook account is active, I have heard. People are glad it's there, they like getting their information that way. And also the email reminders that, of our meetings added to the constant contact. So thank you.
I appreciate the suggestions. So it makes things better.
Thank you. Reported the Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Personnel Services.
Hello, thank you. So a little bit of an update on what's going on with our professional development. Again, we have a lot going on this year, especially with all the audits. So the high school has left. However, they've done a tremendous amount of work in terms of preparing for NIASC. And we did receive that letter, and they'll be coming in November. So that site visit will take place then. We're in a really good place with our preschool NIAC audit, and so they'll also be coming in May this year. So that's right around the corner. And ongoing work on MCAS, which we're in the middle of it for a while. So that has been a focus area for our professional development. And then our ongoing curriculum work that we have in place. Rich did a nice job with technology. He's outstanding. People absolutely love working with Rich. He, he's, he does so much with basically himself and one other person. And the work that I'm collaborating with him on regarding, myself and Peter, regarding Microsoft, he's done a fabulous job with that partnership. And he continues to get money from Microsoft, free, to Abington. So that is such a nice part. But more importantly is, Rich is so loved by our staff that we are so fortunate to have him leading technology and taking on everything that he's been doing over the last few years, has just been something outstanding for, you know, our school system. So I wish he was here to hear that. But he did a really nice job tonight, and he does not showcase what he does on an everyday basis. He's very humble. So the other pieces coming up is a lot of meetings have been taken place around the Alice training, and ongoing curriculum department and grade level professional development. And then in terms of our paraprofessionals, we did a whole training recently on de-escalation, just in terms of people continuing, because our paraprofessionals are there for our special education population, and just giving them more in continuous techniques. Even though it's ongoing with our behaviorists that work with our staff, they receive full, you know, training on de-escalation so that they can continue to stay abreast of all, all of that. Because again, we're keeping so many of our kids within the district, which is the goal. But you have needy children that are staying within districts across the Commonwealth. And so being able to continue to provide professional development in that area is key. We also sent out our professional development survey. So we're seeking input from staff in terms of what they think would be beneficial. So that is coming in. And then we'll be planning everything for next year. We're already in the works, because we need to plan, you know, in advance regarding Microsoft and its technology, and as you know, the rollout of the technology, and the student training, and staff training, and everything else. So that's something that we've been planning as well. So more to come on that front for next year. Any questions on professional development?
Just a general question, Dimpna. I guess it's more like, how, and I think you might have, you might have answered partially the question anyway. But just how are the topics decided? Like, how do you decide what topics are going to be taught? I'll just use the word taught at the professional days throughout the year. Is it planned beginning of the year for the whole year? Is it tweaked? I know, like, take Alice out of the equation. I know that's a different thing. But just their general? I know that's a different thing, but just their general professional development days that are scheduled in our calendar, I guess. How is that schedule developed?
There's a curriculum on Professional Development Council that meets, and there's a significant amount of staff that's on that, as well as administrators. And so, that has been in place, you know, before my time. And so, that body represents each school and basically solicits input in terms of the professional development. Some of it is not by choice. It's things that we have to do by law. And so, for many years, we had no choice but to do certain initiatives. And then, there are other times that we can build in, you know, department meeting times and curriculum times and grade level times and doing initiatives that we wanna do. For instance, the technology piece is, you know, it's, it's not something that perhaps, you know, they would have requested right away, but because of the timing of, the money is part of the building project, which then the purchases happen, which then the training happens, that's not by choice by the staff. We are doing that. But they do have some autonomy, but not, you know, full autonomy. So, and then, like, the Alice, they had no autonomy over that, but we built in time, and that's something, you know, that we're putting into place.
So, can I just add something to that? The technology piece is a great example. Obviously, that was timed by the purchase of the computers, and we've been working on that for quite some time. Tonight, we talked about seven through 12. But there's also, at the elementary level, quite a bit of work being done around the best practice uses of technology in the classroom because we wanna develop, we wanna use the, the standards for the use of technology in Massachusetts from kindergarten through grade 12 so that our kindergarteners are learning. You know, you say, "What was the kindergarten to learn about a computer?" Well, I think some of the things we're talking about tonight, like Wendy asked about, are important. What's a, what's a password? How do you, how do you enter a password in? And you don't share your password? Or, or maybe, you know, a little, they're not memorizing their passwords, but just, just safety. There are very basic things that we start with at the early elementary level, and then, we end up with an AP Computer Science experience is the goal at Abington High School. So, I know we spent a lot of time talking about seven through 12, people one-to-one, but at the elementary level, there's a lot of work that has to be done with technology also, and that's driven by that purchase.
Or ELA is a good example for this year as well. So, like, we made a large sum, you know, purchase. We have professional development that comes with that purchase. So, there's not really a choice, although there is a pilot group of teachers who provides feedback in terms of what textbook they would prefer to go with, what resources they prefer to go with. But then, there's not much autonomy in terms of, you know, when can you get the PD? It's based on the in-service days we have set it, plus, you know, the timing of the consultants. So, there's some autonomy, but not full autonomy. But the nice part is, it's really driven by that group. You know, we don't have any hidden agendas or, but we have, you know, our strategic planning that guides that group. And then, sometimes, things will come up. The biggest thing that that group says that they never have enough of is time. And that is like the never-ending education, educational dilemma. There's just never enough time. If we could give teachers every single day more time, you know, for common planning, for more time for meeting with specialists, more time for meeting, you know, during common planning time with their grade level or departments, you know, that would be ideal. But we work off 180 days with certain amount of time. So, so yes or no?
Okay. I have one random one. It's, a couple people asked me just because they're trying to plan stuff. Do you have any, the summer program dates nailed down yet or no?
Yeah, we do. I'm meeting with Sarah this week, so we'll be sending all of that out, but I'd rather not share it tonight. But in the past, you know, you actually were one of the people that recommended doing the new model for the month. So, we're continuing to do that. And then, you know, we do the posting for our extended school year staffing. And that's all. But team chairs and our director, Sarah McGinnis, have been involved in that process. And I'm meeting with her on Friday, and then, all the paperwork will be sent out.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Jackie from Colonial Road. The professional development days, do the teachers who attend fill out a survey at the end of each session to get feedback?
Well, it depends. So, in some, they may, because we have it linked to SMART PD and for professional development. And then, some, they may not. But usually, it depends on grade levels at the elementary level. We do more of that. Shari does a lot of that. That's her role. And then, at the, with the department heads and the directors at the secondary level, it varies more, so.
You don't have like a generic form the district uses for PD?
We do. We have a generic form.
And does that get submitted back to the facilitator? Does the facilitator, the person who did the PD, do they see the results of the form?
Yeah.
They do.
It seemed, okay.
Yeah. I mean, we have used it in the past. I don't know if they've used it this much, this year as much, but we do have a standard form.
So, for all of the grade levels that teachers, because you said some elementaries, is it more than high schools? So, do they all?
Well, it's all part of our system. And so, you know, some people use technology more versus the form, et cetera. But if, if that's a concern, we can certainly, you know, they, they have the opportunity to share with their department heads, their directors, and then, Shari's the head of the elementary at the, at the elementary level. I can follow up with the department heads, directors, and Shari in terms of, are they using it on a consistent basis so that they're getting feedback? That's fine.
It's based on anonymous generic feedback where people may not feel, say, the feedback's unfavorable, and they don't wanna tell an administrator or building individual that they found that to be less productive PD time.
Well, they do. They have no problem telling us.
So, some districts implement like a standard forms?
Yeah, we have that. We have that, but, you know, truth be told, it becomes just a, all right, we gotta fill this out. So, it's less meaningful because the Curriculum Professional Development Council actually brought that to my attention when I first started years ago. And so, we use the, the people to solicit input from their people. They get more out of it than the forms that we get, based on what our staff tells us. But I don't mind. It doesn't hurt to.
It's just a suggestion, because as a facilitator of PD, I prefer to get the anonymous feedback, and then, it's, it's expected every time, and then, I can use it to plan or alter future PD sessions.
Yeah. We certainly can, but, but trust us. We know when they're not happy with anything. So, and they change, and we're lucky because people change. We're small enough, you know, so that people, you know, try to change it up. Some of it is, again, you know, they don't always get the opportunity to choose the PD. If they had more of an opportunity to probably choose, you know, it might be a little different. But we do have that in place. But good question. We can, we can hone in on that. I'll just let the, again, I'll just let the people that are running that know. Okay?
Yeah, April 30th.
Yep, and then, the Alice training.
Is this the department?
Yeah, department-based or some. So, that would just be, you know, the department heads.
Yeah.
So, next, mine is on the Teaching and Learning Strategic Action Plan. And as Peter did his on the community piece, I'm going to also review this. And then, if there's anything in particular, you know, feel free to ask regarding teaching and learning. The first objective is provide rigorous and relevant curriculum and instruction in optimal learning environment. And so, we have the ongoing action plans regarding the curriculum and alignments. And that's continuing, continuing through pre-K curriculum guides, scopes and sequences, and the purchase of resources. That is always ongoing. And we have that aligned with our handbook and the expectations, and it's also aligned with our budget process. Hire and assign instructional staff to maintain optimal class size and programs at all grade levels. Again, that's contingent upon the school budget. Incorporate the mass technology literacy standards into the curriculum instruction and assessment. And then, we've done a lot, as you heard Rich talking about technology skill courses, also the technology literacy standards, and then, ongoing professional development. An example there is our Microsoft partnership. Identify and embed practices in instructional and assessment that support, instruction, I should say, and assessment that support student achievement. And that's been completed. We've embedded as much of the 21st century skills into the curriculum as people are working on their curriculum alignments. Identify students who are struggling to make effective progress and provide resources and remediation. So, that's always an ongoing review. Continual monitoring of student progress and then, persistent analysis of dropout rates. We're also pleased to say that with the coordinated program review, which is an audit, which is quite extensive, we really heard wonderful feedback. So, we had, you know, great feedback from the auditors regarding our staff feedback as well as parental feedback. So, that also goes to show, you know, the ongoing monitoring is working. Identify capacity building opportunities and create specialized services and programming. We always analyze this on an annual review basis. We extend our in-district programming, and we hire appropriate specialized staff, and it's contingent upon the school budget. I use the example of when I first came here, we had well over 50, you know, kids in out-of-district placements, and now, we have under 20. And so, that's a testament to our staff and also to the community who, and the boys tonight is a perfect example, our hockey team on the culture and what our community does for our students with special needs. Next is analyze student performance data from a variety of sources to make informed decisions. Support data teams charged with collecting and analyzing student performance data. And that's ongoing with looking at data and assessments. Identify areas of need and make curricular and instructional decisions based on student achievement data. And those are recurrent review and analysis of formative and summative assessments and statewide assessments. Develop and implement common formative and summative assessments. Again, that's continual, and then, prepare for the implementation of the adoption. And then, we, they've moved on to the next generation, you know, MCAS. So, that's also ongoing and, and going well regarding the online piece. And then, our last piece is committing time and resources for meaningful collaboration and high-quality professional development. And again, I know you hear me talk about not only our in-service, in-service tons, but we have a lot of staff that access going to professional development, trainings and courses and conferences, et cetera. And so, that's ongoing, and we link that to a lot of our grants. And so, some targeted areas this year. We know Alice is ongoing, the technology in terms of looking at cultural climate and optimal learning environments, anti-bullying, behavioral training, social thinking curriculum, ELA, and et cetera. So, any questions on our teaching and learning? Okay, thanks.
We'll move on. Report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance.
Thank you. I have a school building committee update regarding 2011 Linolite Way. Last week, over vacation, we had a lot of buzz around the building making repairs, some warranty repairs, some original construction repairs. We also installed, I believe, it's 72 new lockers on the high school side and 72 additional lockers on the middle school side because of the growth that we've seen in our enrollment. We are, you see the work being done out on the grass field out front. They're hoping to seed that in the next week or two. Peter mentioned the photovoltaic on the roof. We're about between a week and a half and two weeks away from lighting that up and using the sun to power the building. Over vacation week, we also had some additional signage put on the building. I don't know if you noticed it when you came in above the middle school doors. It says, "Middle school, high school doors," and then, it says, "Gym auditorium," or performing, I can't remember what it says on the other side, but, and pre-K. So, so new lettering went up because there had been some comments around the difficulty in seeing some of the signs that were put up. Additionally, we're continuing conversation, no, I should say more than conversations. We are trying to come to resolution with the company around the sheet linoleum flooring that's in the main, kinda part of the building, the cafeterias and the main hallways that go down past the gym and the auditorium. The product itself is fine. There's been issues around the installation of the product. So, we've been working with the installer, with the general contractor, and with the, the flooring manufacturer coming up, trying to come up with some resolution around those repairs. Looking forward into the summertime, we're also, besides having floor repairs done in the main sections of the building, those same sections, the long hallway, the middle school long hallway and some of the high school main hallway, we're having wall coverings put on that'll go up about four feet. And if you notice walking down those halls, the backpacks and, and hands and feet have caused some discoloration on the wall. So, the building committee has approved that. That'll be installed over the summer as well. And, you know, I would say that our custodial crew as well over the school year has, like I say, we've come a long way, baby. All the new equipment that was installed, that was part of the building project in terms of maintenance and custodial was new to everybody, as was the facility itself. And the custodial staff has, in the, since the beginning of the year, we've seen marked improvements, and the students too, around picking things up and cleaning. And so, that's been really nice to see, so. And hopefully, next year, we won't have any snow, and we won't have to worry about that. Oh, the other last part, this is, speaking of snow. During the storms that we had February and March, if you drove around the site, you probably saw a lot of water runoff, and you saw pooling of water and icing in some places. And we have worked with our civil engineers, and they submitted a plan, and there is gonna be some more drainage that's gonna be added to the site, to the front of the build, mostly to the front, the others, on the field side, and then, some additional drainage on the middle school, far middle school side, kind of a budding Riley field. And that will be done well. Quickly, the site contractors here, it'll all be part of that project, so.
Anyone have any questions for Felicia? Okay. New business and establishing of next school committee meeting dates from Monday, May 21st, prior to the special and annual town meetings. And then, Tuesday, May 22nd, the regular school committee meeting. And that needs to be at 7:00 PM. I just saw her face. Dates to remember, Peter?
It's a busy time of year. On the 28th, we have the annual town elections at Abington High School from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. On May 5th, we have the duck race at the Beaver Brook Playground for the Abington, to support the Abington Music Boosters. And that takes place at 1:00 PM. On May 9th, we've got the Be Smart Gun Safety Program here at the Middle High School Auditorium at 7:00 PM. On the 10th, we have an in-service early release day. On the 10th, we also have the AEA Spring Retirement Social at the Mont Ponce Inn. On the 11th, we have an in-service early release day. On the 16th, not here, but I'd like to add, at 7:00 PM, we have the CPAC meeting here at the Abington High School. We also have a building committee meeting here at 6:00 PM that day. On the 16th, on May 25th, we have the senior reception and receiving line at Abington High School at 4:30. On May 29th, we have the music banquet at the Senior Center at 6:30. On the 31st, we have our senior awards evening at 7:00 PM at Abington High School. And on June 2nd, we have a graduation at Abington High School at 10:00 AM. And I apologize, I have a daughter graduating. I won't be there with you. I, I, I love going to the Abington graduations, but my daughter, my wife, and I wouldn't forgive myself if I didn't go to my daughters, so.
On the 30th of April?
April 30th, yes.
April 30th, we have a half-day, yeah.
Hey, Peter, I know you talked about earlier, but just to hit it again, because we're talking about dates. Thursday, in the auditorium, Rick Collins' the Marijuana Forum.
Yep, forum on the sale of marijuana. Yep. And it's meant to be just a discussion from all groups about what this means for the Abington community. It's not a, it's not a for or against. It's just a, here are the facts, here's the discussion, so.
All right. We need to go into executive session by roll call to discuss bargaining with the Abington Education Association and not to return to public, public session. So, Chris?
Yes.
Maddie?
Yes.
Want to say yes? Yes? All right, that's unanimous. Moving into executive session.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna have you sign those three permission slips.
Sure.
I edited them.
Peter, are they due?